For the Committee of the Whole, I call the meeting to order and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Dany?
Here.
Danzy?
Here.
Denstein?
Here.
Laporte?
Here.
President Wallace?
Here. We are going to do Town Hall for a committee, but it will be in the second part, Act Two of the committee meeting that will do the Town Hall. So if anybody, either online or in the room here, would like to address the board for a committee meeting, it's going to be in the second part of the committee meeting. For this particular purpose, we are going to be moving right to standing committee reports for the Committee of the Whole, and we're going to skip down to 4C, Finance Committee, Chairman Laporte.
Thank you, Mr. President. This evening, we will be discussing Item 4C, which is the Reviewed Proposed Budget. We'll have police planning and development, admin, and golf. Without further ado, I'll hand it over to staff.
Good evening. On behalf of the Police Department, Rob Kelly and Kyle and I are very pleased to present you with an overview of the Police Department's proposed budget and answer any questions that you have. Our proposed budget can be found on page 211 if you'd like to follow along on your iPads. So I'm just really proud of our staff, what we accomplished last year. However, tonight, I'd like to just highlight some of the key police initiatives that made a meaningful impact, not only within our organization, but also within our community. And those are strengthening community partnerships, enhancing traffic safety, preventing and reducing crime, advancing our recruitment efforts, and supporting the professional development of our employees. So in regard to strengthening community partnerships, we were really proud to partner with the Alignment Collaborative for Education for the First Responder Paid Internship Program, which we partnered with Hanover Park Fire Department and Hanover Township Emergency Services. This one-of-a-kind program offered 10 high school students from seven high schools in three different school districts an opportunity to get valuable insights and learn more about the careers of law enforcement and fire sciences. This program was also presented at the DuPage Mayors and Managers Conference Municipal Innovation Celebration and Conference Business Meeting in September. Also, too, we received a lot of great response from the Bartlett community. So this school year, we started what's called the High Five Friday Initiative, where at the beginning of each month on a Friday, we go to different schools, and we greet the students with warm welcoming and some high fives. So far, we went to Sycamore, Prairie View, Centennial, Nature Ridge, and it's really taken off. People have seen the videos on social media, and we get a lot of phone calls from the parents and the PTO saying, hey, when are you going to come to our school? So we are pleased to announce we will be at Liberty Elementary School this Friday. Also, too, really proud of our SROs. So the new Eastview Middle School Resource Officer, Samuel Mora, actually helped coach the inaugural seventh grade boys and girls soccer team. So that's just a great way to build relationships with that, the youth group. One thing we're really proud of is our fundraising efforts. Our Police Department took a part in several fundraising activities for our Special Olympic Illinois athletes, including the Illinois Law Enforcement Torch Run, the Polar Plunge and Cop on a Rooftop, which we raised over $12,000 for Special Olympic athletes. Just the last weekend, Rob Sweeney, as part of Special Olympics, raised approximately $4,000 on a last person standing ultra marathon, and members of our Police Department braved it out for the Polar Plunge in Crystal Lake, which we've raised over $5,000. We take great pride with our community engagement on our social media platforms. We almost have 19,000 followers on our Facebook page, as well as 5,000 followers on Twitter or known as X. For instance, one of our winter driving social media posts was seen by half of a million people, and one of our cold weather videos was viewed by more than 300,000 people. So it just shows you the impact you can make with the community. We were always told when we first started, you make your impact by getting out of the police car or every interaction you have on a traffic stop, but literally, we have taken social media to the next level, and it's created such a buzz, not only here, but throughout the community. No matter where any of our staff goes, people always ask, you know, who is the person behind the curtain? I'm just really proud of us putting ourselves out there. What we do is we do it in an engaging way, a fun way, where we humanize the badge and we get our important message out. Just really proud of our traffic safety initiatives. This past year, the Police Department was honored to receive the 2023-2024 Illinois Traffic Safety Challenge First Place Award in our municipal police category. This prestigious award recognizes efforts to address three key traffic safety priorities: occupant protection, speeding, and impaired driving. And as a result of this, the Police Department received a $5,700 scholarship from the Northwestern University Center for Public Safety for one of our officers to attend five different essential traffic reconstruction investigation courses. Last year, the Police Department conducted approximately 7,800 traffic stops, made 78 DUI arrests, and issued 192 aggravated speeding citations, which means those drivers were doing 26 miles over the speed limit or more to help keep our roadways safe. The Police Department, we understand that, you know, truck safety is a big priority, especially on Naperville Roads and West Bartlett Road. We're really proud that we have partnered with the Illinois State Police and Illinois Department of Transportation, and we conducted two joint truck enforcement initiatives. And at the end of August, the Police Department conducted its first-ever roadside safety check with the Streamwood Police Department, which officers from both police departments inspected 700, over 700 vehicles, resulting in a couple arrests for driving under the influence of alcohol. And this is just, just an astounding stat right here. So this was the first year since 2012 where there were no reported motor vehicle crash fatalities in the village of Bartlett. And I attribute that to a lot of the engineering, roadway engineering that's been going down on the different roadways. Also, too, I just want to give a lot of credit to our staff. We take a lot of pride in just our traffic safety. Speaking of traffic safety, what we do to get out there is we're part of the I.DOT Step Grant, which is a sustained traffic enforcement grant, which targets intoxicated drivers, distracted driving, speeding, and occupant protection. And with that, in 2023 and 2024, we received approximately $28,000 part of that grant, and then $32,000, which are used for overtime hours to get extra officers out there to protect our roadways. The Police Department also upgraded its aging in-car mobile video cameras, if you remember from our last budget, which we received a grant of over $100,000 from the Lettsby for the in-car camera program. Really proud of our efforts for preventing and reducing crime. Last year, our Police Department was dispatched to over 14,000 calls for service and initiated 23,000 calls for service. In 2024, our Part I and Part II crime rate was 2.2, which was an 8% decrease from 2023. If you're not familiar with that, that is the, what the FBI uses for serious crimes would be Part I, and Part II would be less serious crimes. If you remember, last year, we asked to have a full-time social worker, and that's because we're experiencing a lot of mental health-related calls for service, which take up a great majority of our time, and we couldn't be happier with our partner with NetFist. For example, Daisy Payne, our social worker, provides short-term counseling, connects residents with valuable community services, resources such as housing assistance, food programs, mental health services, and substance abuse treatment. Last year, she managed the diversion and redirect programs, in addition to 279 referrals, reflecting a 42% increase from the previous year. So she stays very busy. In regard to our recruitment efforts, you know, for a long time, we've been down up to nine officers. And what we really did this year is we focused our recruitment efforts trying to become to full strength. So our full strength is 63 sworn officers, and I'm proud to say we're three officers short, and we really feel that we have a great opportunity to reach full staffing for the first time since the 21-22 budget. Some of our recruitment efforts is based on us reducing the fees for taking the police officer tests. Was the first time we've seen an increase in police officer applications. Our last police test, we had 181 individuals take out applications for our police test. We also reestablished our internship program with Western Illinois University, and we currently have two law enforcement majors who are with our Police Department, and we're hoping they do well where we can have them join us in a few years. Most recently, we partnered with Northern Illinois University to help their students with a career-related mock interviews, which is going to be headed by Christopher Johnson. So we're really excited by that, and it's going to be, I think, one of the first mock interviews they've done in regard to law enforcement-related. Trying to get people interested in Bartlett, because literally, you're competing with every other police department. What makes Bartlett special? And we want to show people that they belong in Bartlett. So this was Rob's idea. He came up with a three-day Police Academy preview, which allows people who are interested in becoming a police officer to see what it's like to take the power physical test, defensive tactic scenarios, realistic traffic stop simulations, and hands-on firearm familiarization. We're proud to announce that one of our officers in the academy went through that program, and two more are currently on, very high up on our police officer list, which we hoped for them to choose Bartlett because of that program that Rob initiated. So just really proud of that. And then I know that the Village Board always asks Paul about what are we doing, you know, to build our bench in supporting the professional development of our employees? And the perfect example is what you see here today. So in case you're not aware, if you're wondering where Will Nadenoff is, he came down with a really bad stomach flu. Came down with it yesterday, so probably not a good idea that he was here. So what we do is what we do best is we're prepared, and anybody in my staff can take over any single time. So we tag Team Kyle in, and he's filling in for Will, and that just shows you that I just have the trust and confidence and faith that Kyle's going to do a good job, just like if Peter or Tom had to fill in for one of us. But our Police Department is very proud of our training. I know a lot of it has to do with the academy and, you know, what we have to do for the state mandate, but we went through 16,000 hours of training for both our sworn and non-s sworn. And finally, I can say we're in a good position to finally be able to fill key roles in assignments we haven't been able to do so in the past. We're really proud of Mark Doyle. He was one of our community service officers who learned the court liaison position after Mark Hogan passed away. We're really proud of Margaret Milos, who's now assigned as our accreditation manager, who took over after Larry Penzek, our longstanding accreditation manager, retired. In regard to our staff developing them, we, Detective Iash is now on the MCAT Investigations Team. Officer Al Dohati was assigned to the Police Department's Traffic Unit. Officer Gray was assigned to the MCAT Serious Traffic Accident Reconstruction Team, and Dylan Villarreal was assigned to the MCAT Forensics Team. We're also really excited that Officer Juante and Officer Joe Grasba are going through the testing for the different merit SWAT team and NIPIS Emergency Response Team, in hopes of trying to get a specialized SWAT member on each one of our shifts, just for the different serious types of calls that we have, just to give our community that protection, our officers the confidence to handle those calls. Moving on to the budget, our proposed budget has increased by 6%, mostly due to higher personnel costs, pension obligations, vehicle setup expenses, and the reallocation of service agreement costs from central services. The Police Department is requesting to utilize 300, 300, I'm sorry, $332,609, so over $332,000 in equitable sharing. In case you don't know what equitable sharing is, we have an officer that's assigned to the DEA Task Force, and any seize money that is brought in from her team or her eventually gets vetted to our Police Department. So currently, in our equitable sharing fund, we have close to $1.3 million. With that, we have to use it for law, specific law enforcement-related items. It can't be used for things outside of the Police Department. So all the things that we're asking to use equitable sharing for, which will be DACRA, which Kyle will explain, our police leadership training, license plate readers, training room tables are in the capital outlay, and MVRs, body worn cameras, TASER 10, and the license plate readers, which you approved in the last budget, which is a five-year agreement as part of the service agreements, have all been vetted and approved, if approved by the Board for equitable sharing amount. So I know one of the questions sometimes the Board asks is, well, can you use some of that 1.3 million for other things? We've always been physically responsible with our equitable sharing, and that's because it's not a constant flow of money coming in, and just knowing that we have a five-year agreement with our body cameras and our tasers and everything that gives us some cushion where we can keep going back to the Board using those equitable sharing instead of using tax-funded dollars. Moving on to the police summary and the personnel request detail, there are no changes to the Police Department's authorized staffing of 63 sworn officers and 18 non-s sworn officers. This has remained the same since the 22-23 budget. And with that, I now want to turn over the presentation to Commander Rybaski, who will provide all of you with an overview of the Police Department's capital outlay request detail. Kyle?
Thank you, Chief Recalas, and thank you for this opportunity. Good evening, Mayor and trustees. The first capital item to present is a replacement of two vehicles, patrol vehicles and a 2012 court liaison vehicle. All three vehicles meet the criteria in the Vehicle Replacement Guidelines and Evaluation Form that ensures the replacement qualifies based on factors like their engine hours, high mileage, and high repair cost. Another capital item is DACRA tech software, and this is funded out of equitable sharing. DACRA is a software system that would replace the village's outdated local adjudication database. DACRA is a game changer for our operations for improving efficiency and obtaining accurate data. Right now, officers have to handwrite citations for violations in Cook and King Counties, and clerks spend valuable time manually entering that data. With DACRA, officers can issue electronic citations across all three counties, eliminating the purchasing of ticket books and reducing errors caused by handwriting. This means faster, more efficient processes for both officers and records clerks. DACRA is also a solution that benefits multiple departments, including IT and planning and development. Right now, we're juggling five different databases to manage parking, warning, and local ordinance citations across three counties. This system simplifies everything by consolidating it into one platform, making operations more efficient, reducing errors, and improving collaboration between departments. We are one of the last agencies to move to this system in our area. We are in need to replace 24 printers for patrol vehicles, which is also funded out of equitable sharing. Our current squad printers are reaching the end of their life with product support no longer available. These printers are compatible with DACRA and essential for issuing electronic citations and meeting traffic crash report requirements. Digitized Microfilm. We currently have old police reports between 1978 and 1989 that are stored on microfilm. This company, who already stores these reports, will digitalize all of these old reports from microfilm to laser fish, eliminating the yearly storage fees we pay them. By digitalizing these reports, it creates a searchable database to ensure compliance with detention periods and expungement requirements. We'd also like Six Flock License Plate Readers, which is also funded out of equitable sharing. Since implementing license plate readers, we've had 36 success stories helping us solve crimes, recover stolen vehicles, and locate missing or endangered individuals who might not have been found otherwise. By adding six more LPRs, we can cover most major exits from Bartlett, closing critical gaps in our coverage. This expansion would strengthen our ability to identify suspects, tracked vehicles, or stolen vehicles, and improve case solvability, ultimately making our community safer. Last year, police responded to 62 hit-and-run incidents on these key roadways. Thanks to our license plate readers, we've been able to solve multiple of these cases, helping to hold officers accountable and provide justice for our victims. With Flock, we have access to a vast network of nearly 17,000 license plate readers within a 500-mile radius, providing a powerful tool to aid our investigations. These LPRs have helped us safely locate numerous missing or endangered teens and adults who left their homes in a vehicle. They were also instrumental in finding a female victim who was kidnapped at knife point and later rescued in Indiana. We use these LPRs to investigate a subject who shot a firearm in the morning off of Newport Boulevard from a moving vehicle, and due to the LPR, we were able to identify the funding vehicle and make an arrest in the afternoon. We're also requesting two additional traffic speed counters to increase the amount of traffic studies, vehicle counts, and speed monitoring, so we can conduct simultaneously to address multiple traffic-related complaints. Our traffic counters are deployed during the construction of the intersections of Route 59 and West Bartlett Road. They were also utilized after receiving numerous traffic complaints along North Avenue, and we had great success explaining the findings to the residents and optimizing our deployment efforts to address their concerns. We also like 20 training tables with power sources funded out of equitable sharing. Our current training room tables don't have a power source, and there are limited four outlets available. We would continue to utilize our current tables and would fulfill a required seating for large-size classes with these additional 20 tables. These tables are covered under a government contract source well for best price. Many of these training classes we host require individual laptops or tablets to be used. Without these tablets, it prevents us from hosting certain classes that, if allowed, we could send officers to them for free, potentially saving us thousands of dollars in training fees. Additionally, we would use these tablets, or these tables, for emergency operations center, and currently using several extension cords, if you remember from being in there, and to accommodate the needs of our members in our EOC. The training rooms are often utilized by the community for their trainings and meetings. It is used by the Fourth of July Committee, School District U46, the Bartlett Raiders, the Law Enforcement Records Managers of Illinois, and Cook County Emergency Management, to name a few. And lastly, we're seeking the purchase of an additional pole camera. Currently, we have two pole cameras that we use for a variety of important purposes, including monitoring the Fourth of July Festival, tracking drag racing or street takeovers, and supporting residential burglary investigations. These cameras are frequently in use, which is why we're seeking an additional one. We've tried borrowing cameras from other organizations, but unfortunately, their equipment either wasn't available or didn't work with our systems. These cameras not only record, but they also allow police personnel to access them remotely during active investigations. They serve as a strong deterrent against crime at special events, and they've already helped us make significant arrests, like the one on Vulcan for drag racing. In that case, the camera alerted our records clerk, will quickly notify patrol to respond, leading to the arrest. Expanding our camera network will further enhance our ability to monitor, deter, and respond to criminal activity in real time. Unless there are any questions, I'd like to turn it over to Deputy Chief Sweeney. Thank you.
Thanks, Kyle. Mayor, members of the Board, I'm going to be going over professional development and professional associations. As I spoke with you last year about, training and development is an integral part of ensuring that the village is maintaining a professional and effective police department. This year, we are proposing an 11% increase to the professional development budget, but the entirety of that increase is being funded through equitable sharing, and that is to send one command staff member to a senior management institute of police, which is an executive-level training in Boston, Massachusetts, hosted by the Police Executive Research Forum, which is the gold standard in the development of police leadership. This is a three-week course. We've sent the chief, Deputy Chief Nadenoff, and Commander Rybaski in the last several years to this program. They've all had raving reviews about it, and they've brought back such programs as the ICAT, which is a de-escalation training. They brought back the focus of making positive community contacts and engaging the community through social media, and adapting our recruitment and retention program to the current-day applicant pool. And we've seen a lot of benefit from sending people to this program, and we would hope to send another patrol commander or investigations commander in the coming year. Overall, we have a three-pronged approach to our training and development program. The first prong is ensuring that our employees are trained to keep themselves and the public safe, that they know how to investigate matters thoroughly, and that they understand the law and what they can and can't do. The second prong is to ensure that we are meeting state training mandates that are set forth in the Safety Act. We just found out from my Lettsby yesterday that we are currently at 100% compliance with all state mandates in our training. Thirdly, we are ensuring that we are preparing our employees for future roles and promotions to session planning, just like the chief had said. As you know, we've had a lot of turnover in the last several years. We are a very young department, so our focus has been preparing everybody for that next step, getting them ready, creating that base layer. So through that, we have two types of trainings that we're sending the majority of our officers to. We have external and internal training. External training is everything you see here in the professional development. That's stuff that we pay money to send our officers to. These are generally training conferences, certifications. Certifications are such things as certifying an officer as a juvenile officer, an evidence technician, a field training officer, a drone operator, some things that we cannot internally certify them to do. The third level of instruction we're doing is instructor-level certification. What we do there is we send our officers that have shown the ability and interest to dedicate time beyond what we allow them at the Police Department, and they train our officers internally. Each of these external-level courses, we are restricting the amount of officers that we can send to each one. So it would be impossible for us to send our officers to every single one of these trainings, but by instructing or certifying people to instruct these courses, we can then do it internally and get all the officers done without paying the additional fees. We also send our officers to online courses, such as Online Learning Network and Police Law. Some of these online courses allow us to meet state mandates that we won't have to normally send people to an in-person type training. Our internal trainings are, we have a yearly catalog of in-house trainings that we do. Those are either three, four, eight-hour trainings. We do roll call trainings, and then we do department memorandums. Both external and internal trainings are required for the Police Department to accomplish our training goals and requirements, and so we feel that everything set forth in this professional development proposal is a necessary step to get us to where we need to be. Unless there are any questions, I'll move on to the professional associations.
Sorry. Go ahead.
As far as professional development goes, are we in line with what other communities do for their professional development?
So, so all, it's by regions. We're part of what's called Northeast Multi-Regional Training. So we pay a yearly fee to them, and we compete with all the other departments to attend those trainings. And so basically, the formatting of all departments is the same. They send officers to trainings at Niemer, and then those officers come back and teach these departments internally.
I had a question from the previous section. So with the tables upstairs, do we trade those in, get rid of them? What happens with the tables that are there now?
We would keep those tables. They would complement the tables that we already have existing. It would increase the tables of being longer. It would just allow additional electrical hookups to allow for our computers and our tablets and allow these bigger trainings like Northwestern Staff and Command to come in, and that's like a big product or a big price tag for that training, and that would save us thousands of dollars if we can get officers in there by having those tables.
Okay. And then just out of curiosity, I guess, question for the printers and the vehicles. It says e-citation, so is something actually being printed, or is it like printed to a system?
Both. The officers in the printers, by having the printers, they're able to print out like the receipt or like the ticket to give to the motorist. So that's what those printers are for. The e-citations electronically get sent to the court systems, get sent to our records thing, so we don't have to recopy all our existing tickets that we do now into the database.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Who copies all those into the database? Is it the officer?
Depending on the counties and some of that, the records clerks would be doing that work, which you imagine takes a lot of time and room for error.
And what did you say about with equitable sharing? How is it determined? Like, why is the one training funded through that?
As I mentioned, we try to just take a very conservative approach with our equitable sharing funds. Reason being is it's not a constant source of equitable sharing that comes in. Like, for instance, we, they're called DAGs. We haven't seen a DAG probably in like two months. So currently, right now, the DEA is on hold of doing certain activities at the airport. They were able to resume the activities at the train depots and at the bus stations, but they're waiting for a direction from President Trump's staff to figure out if we continue to do so. So with that, as I mentioned, we just want to be very conservative, especially since we have these five-year agreements, which are very big, expensive agreements with our body cameras, our mobile video cameras, and our tasers, that we have enough money where we don't need to go to the Board and ask for tax-funded dollars to, to use, or to ask the taxpayers to pay for that stuff. We could just use equitable sharing. And once again, all that stuff is vetted through the government. We reach out to them. They have specific guidelines of what we can and can't use this stuff with, and we shared everything that we had, including the tables, and they said that they would all be approved for equitable sharing if we wanted to do so, if approved by the Board.
Thank you.
Any other questions on professional development? I'll move on to professional organizations. So we are currently requesting $457 or less than we did last year, and that's due mostly to a reduction in cost for the Cook County Children's Embassy Center. They acquired more departments that were utilizing them, which just made the cost less for the entirety of the people using it. We have added no new associations this year. All the included associations are utilized by the Police Department staff as either a networking tool, a resource to compare policies and procedures with other agencies, or as a tool to assist criminal investigations. So unless there's any other questions about professional organizations, I will turn it back over to Commander Rybaski for the line items.
Thank you, Deputy Chief Sweeney. As we move forward, let's take a closer look at some key line items. Let's start with service agreements. We saw a 40% increase in costs this year, primarily due to the transfer of several key expenses from central services budget to the police budget. These include a building security system, degenerative maintenance agreement, and the upkeep for our metal roof. This shift consolidates- This shift consolidates these essential services under our budget, ensuring better oversight and allocation of resources. With equipment rentals, there is 11% decrease in cost due to eliminating the Fourth of July scissor lift. With the utilization of the drone at the festival, it provides more mobile capabilities and better views. With advertisement and recruitment, we are requesting a $500 increase to keep up with the rising cost of recruitment materials and advertisement to our ongoing police officer testing process. This investment allows us to remain highly competitive and attracting in hiring the most qualified applicants. Regarding communications and DUCOM, we saw a significant reduction in our DUCOM fees, down over $25,000 from $891,140 to $865,774. This decrease came after the DUCOM Finance Committee approved the allocation of over $1 million from reserves, bringing the reserve balance down to 35% and distributing the savings across DUCOM agencies. Chief Peralos, as a member of the committee, played a key role in advocating for this cost reduction. We are requesting $5,000 increase in vehicle maintenance costs to account for rising prices and parts and labor. This adjustment aligns with the broader trend of increasing maintenance expenses. With vehicle setup, there is a 40% increase due to one additional patrol vehicle requiring equipment installation that cannot be completed this year and will carry over. Uniform costs have increased by 5% to accommodate the purchase of necessary equipment and uniforms to outfit a new SWAT member joining merit. With subscriptions and publications, there was a 32% decrease, largely due to elimination of the Guardian Tracking Software Program. This system, which we use for employee early warning system and was a CLIA requirement, became redundant after the release of new capabilities in our existing PS tracker program. We were pleased to discover that our equipment inventory, PS tracker software, now includes this feature at no additional cost as part of our subscription. Automotive supplies had decreased by 9% or $13,200 because the projected cost of gasoline went down. And lastly, Police and Fire Commission, in our efforts to stay competitive, we limited recruitment application fees for our police testing process. As a result, we saw a record-high turnout of applicants, with other agencies inquiring what our secret was, jumping from an average of 60 to 70 applicants to 181 applicants. When compared to other local police departments, this was one of the highest turnouts that any agency near us had seen. Offering free applications is becoming a growing trend, and we believe this change will allow us to conduct testing just once a year instead of three times, ultimately saving us costs in the long run. However, this adjustment, along with the increase in the number of applications received, has led to a 30% increase in cost. This concludes the line item portion of the budget. If there are any other questions, I will happy to turn it over to Chief Peralos for closing remarks.
I just have one question on that FLOC. The added six, is the $28,000 annual fee that's in the budget, is that inclusive of the six additional service contracts that are needed?
I believe the...
The new ones would be in addition to that cost.
It would be in addition to that, that cost. So that FLOC...
So that brings from nine to 15.
So that FLOC contract next year is going to be around 36,000 to 40,000?
I have the exact number for you. It would be... Chief, if you want to, I'll come back to you.
Okay, that's fine.
Does anyone else have any other questions?
I'm just curious, because it seems in our strategic plan that some of the goals are possibly like closed out. Do you feel, is there anything that, within our strategic plan and the goals that we have, that you're focused on this year, or like, is something in the budget that's showing that you're extra focused on this year, just from the different goals that we had set?
So if you take a look at our budget, there's way more highlights than I went through. I just went through the ones that you probably have never seen before.
Okay.
Part of our, you know, stuff is just creating like safe events, which is spelled out in there in regard to, and I met with all of you in regard to what we do to keep all of our special events safe, and we're going to have a later discussion about that a little bit, too. Also, too, it's notifying our residents of our different activities and stuff, which we do through our social media pages and our press releases. And also, too, you know, just our engagement with the community in regard to our special, all of our different special events. But also, too, as I mentioned, I really highlighted the first responder internship, but once again, we do a teen and we do a citizen police academy. We're starting our high school police academy, actually, this tomorrow, Wednesday, which we have 16 high school students that are going to be going through that, which we are going to be working together with the fire district.
And Chief, I would also add that one of the ongoing goals that we have in the strategic plan is with regard to traffic safety and traffic calming and looking at our intersections. This spring, the police department will be doing counts to see if the intersection changes that we did at 59 and West Bartlett Road with the state has done what we hoped it would be and relieved some of the traffic on Naperville Road. So those are some more ongoing things that we're doing. We're working with the state 25, Route 25 and the high school to make sure that those areas are safe when we've got young drivers heading to not only South Elgin, but also to Bartlett High. So those are some of the more ongoing traffic safety initiatives that will continue. They're the more long-term parts of the strategic plan.
Thank you.
I had a question. I know last year, we talked about DUCOM and their fees, and we were looking at other options. Have you explored anything?
Yes, we have. Actually, we reached out to Northwest Central Dispatch. We met with John Ferraro, who is the director. We are in a waiting game right now, so they had to do a study, a feasibility study, to see if they could take on other agencies, and they are still waiting to get that report back, and then meeting with their executive board to see if there's opportunity for expansion of growth of taking other agencies, such as ourself or the fire district.
And we're working with the fire district on that. One of the concerns, the study that the chief alluded to, is whether or not they have the capability to expand to include us. But I really want to call out to Jeff for working very hard with the, you know, representing us and our concerns about costs on the DUCOM board. He joined the budget committee. You know, not only did we raise the concern, that we showed up at the table to make sure that those concerns kept going, and I think the DUCOM board really appreciated the fact that we didn't just bitch about the costs, but we came to help them find a way to reduce them, and we've seen that this year.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I saw some line items, I think, last year in the budget, and, you know, just looking at it and seeing what you guys can do, that's great. Thank you.
Really appreciate it. And then Kyle, is it...
Trustee, just to answer your question, is $21,000 out of equitable sharing this time, but a total from $27,000 before would bring us to $48,000 total, but $21,000 would be out of equitable sharing? Thank you.
Once again, if there's no other questions, on behalf of the police department, I just really want to thank all of you for your support. You know, you are there, you're our constant, and you give us that confidence to do what we need to do, and we're well aware of the strategic plan, and you allow us the grace and, you know, to serve with care and protect with confidence. You had all of our special events during holiday times, you come in there and you provide us with yummy treats and stuff like that. You've been to all the different block parties, the National Night Out. That is what we do, and I couldn't also be more proud of all the staff that you see here that helped put together this budget, and more importantly, just the trust that we have from our residents, civic groups, and businesses who just appreciate the Bartlett way. And, you know, with that, I know I'm up here, and I know I get a lot of the credit, but I can't do any of this without my staff. It is, I understand it's my vision of what I want them to do, but it's all of them who go out there every single day, giving them the all, to all of our residents, to just to make sure that Bartlett is a safer place to be, and that their police department is not only professional, but also engaging, but also, too, you know, just shows the human side, that we are part of the community and we belong in Bartlett. So once again, on behalf of the police department, thank you for allowing us to present our proposed budget. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And Chief, I had a very important question. Did any of the eggs get cracked in that video?
No, not at all.
They were all safe? Okay.
Thanks for watching the video, by the way.
I also, we still haven't found out who's doing the Facebook posts, but it should have been listed in here.
Oh, so that's one of the allures and our branding of the police department, is everyone likes to know who it is, but we will never reveal our secret. All I can say is I'm very proud of our staff for putting themselves out there.
We'll know when the retirement comes.
Thank you.
It's really fun, and they put themselves out there and just have fun, and the community, and I know a lot of you just appreciate it, too. So thank you.
Well, just understand that we know as a board, I hope we all do, that this doesn't happen by accident, and you guys are very professional and very well-trained, as Rybaski had mentioned, and we are so appreciative of the way that you serve our village.
Once again, thank you, everybody. And then Mayor, once again, thank you for all the years of support. You've been there at CLIA conferences with us, you've been there with your wife at the block parties and stuff, and I just can't thank you enough and the board. So once again, thank you.
Okay. We'll move on to Planning and Development Services.
Leave it to Christie for that tough act to follow.
I know. He was supposed to drag it out, so I only had like five minutes to rush through mine, like last year.
You get six this year.
I know.
When you have a shorter budget presentation, it means you're being very thrifty, so that's very appreciated.
It does. So first off, I want to say that all of the highlights that I'm going to go over are really accredited to my staff. I have three divisions that I oversee, and they are all incredibly dedicated employees. We have some new employees this year that have really stepped up and brought some of the services that we provide to the next level. Starting out, I wanted to highlight the planning division. This year, we adopted a wayfinding sign plan, which was a recommendation of the bicycle-friendly community program that we applied for. It was also a strategic plan goal. Due to some of our newer staff, it's something we were able to create completely in-house. Most towns outsource this and pay a consultant to prepare it, and we were able to do it ourselves. We've also adopted the Lake Street TIF this year, and we are currently actively pursuing our case for abandonment with 555 West Lake Street. So staff is excited about that ISOR hopefully being removed sooner rather than later. We have been in talks with the property owner to demolish the four buildings that are located on the triangle piece, so those will be coming down, eliminating another ISOR along Lake Street. Staff is working with GIS and economic development to create a dashboard so we can keep track of all the contacts we have with each of the properties, so we're all on the same page and are monitoring any inquiries we get and any projects that are moving forward. We have also started implementing two of the Pitch Fest ideas that were presented this year. So I have a planner that has gone through every ordinance since the 1800s to, so that we can map out which ones are bound to geographic areas, so you can click on a parcel and see what ordinances apply to it. That way, no one's asking me.
Was Trustee Danny in that meeting?
Original one?
Since the 1800s, I thought he was.
The other thing is our planners are starting to use the Blue Beam software so they can do their own impervious calculations, taking that task away from our GIS division, and that way, they are, it eliminates a step in the building permit process. So anything we can do to streamline that process so we can get permits issued faster, that's our goal, which then segues into our building division. 43% of permits were issued within 24 hours of submittal. 72% were issued within a week. So the building department, we are reviewing plans in-house, 100%, other than elevators and fire alarms, which are specialty reviews. We issued six new industrial building permits this past year and 111 residential permits, mainly in the grasslands. We had 27 townhomes, 25 traditional single-family, 25 ranches, and 32 duplexes. We also had two infill lots. I expect grasslands to continue development throughout this year and next construction season, but then that, those subdivisions should have been done. Code enforcement for the first year has had over 1,000 code complaints that we closed out. 91% of these were corrected before the time it had to go to local adjudication. They have started adding business license verification as part of their process. They started looking for inoperable vehicles when they do their RV sweeps, and the LA process has been included, streamlining that with their tickets. As we had a resident that came forward saying that they weren't aware of the adjudication process, we now have a flyer that we send out explaining how the process works. We have a lot of upcoming projects. Planning and zoning, we'll be seeing cases at Newport and Devon for commercial development, Horizon and Lake Street, Southwind and Benchmark, Fairfax and Army Trail. We have an application that's currently incomplete for our first dispensary in the village. And Promenade is looking to start construction in the next couple of months at County Farm and Sterns. So looking at our budget for next year, we're proposing an increase of an estimated 3%. One of our current permit clerks is working towards certification to become a permit tech, which would allow her to review some of the permits, allowing our plan reviewer to look at the more complex, so take a little bit off of their plate, that again, will streamline our permitting process even further. The police department spoke a little bit about the DACR program. Code enforcement would be utilizing that as well. The local adjudication database that they were talking about is something I designed in 2014. It's hard for me to remember what I coded years ago when we run into problems, so this would be a huge time saver for code enforcement, and it allows almost no paperwork for our staff prior to adjudication hearings. The hearing officer would be able to access all of the background information in the DACR program, which would save staff a significant amount of time. One of the big cost savings that we have this year is we are reducing our budget for plan review services. Previously, we budgeted $50,000. We are cutting that down to $20,000 because our staff is able to do it in-house. We are not having any changes to professional development. The two conferences that I will be attending are in Detroit, Michigan, and Effingham, Illinois. Exciting locations. So almost all of our employees have different certifications that they are required to maintain for their positions, so we have multiple trainings that they go to. A lot of them are locally, so there is not that much travel. Most of our fees are due to registration costs. I don't believe our budget changed at all on any of our associations. The one thing staff is asking for is one car to replace two vehicles that we currently have. One of the vehicles will be transferred to information services so that GIS would have access to a vehicle. That is all that I have for planning and development. Again, this is all possible because we have staff that had figured out how to do more with less, and to keep our levels, the high expectation of service that our residents and our board expects. So I am proud to get to work for them and for all of you. Do you have any questions?
We get a 10-minute break. Do you think we can go through admin or finance in 10 minutes?
Yeah, we stop at two minutes.
What's that?
Kevin, Kevin, we can start it, just stop it for the meeting.
It's tricky that way.
Is it?
Sam, how much time do you think you need?
I could, I could rush through the narrative portion, and then we could start the...
Let's do that.
Okay.
Do the narrative.
All right. Thank you for allowing me to present the administration department's budget tonight. I'm going to roll through here. So looking at page two, the administration department's budget is reflecting a 16% increase this year, and that's primarily due to some transferring of service agreements from central services into administration, as well as some increased spending in the community relations line item, which I'll go over when we get done with the board meeting, and then some additional economic development incentive expenditures as well for sales tax rebates. Moving on to page three, the village continues to... Moving on to page three, the village continues to be a leader in municipal engagement on social media. I think that's been talked about a little bit tonight. The Daily Herald wrote an article in October about that, highlighting the village. Additionally, we have about 1,200 subscribers to our bi-weekly e-newsletter. That does have a 75% open rate, which is actually really good for like a bulk email service across all industries. So we're very happy with that our subscribers are, you know, opening it and wanting to know what's going on in the village. Moving on to page four, we had another successful Marion Bright event this year. It was certainly a little bit colder than it has been the last four or five years, but we had a lot of good turnout, especially around the time that that tree was being lit. Some of those changes this year included, the library did a kids read-along in the gazebo. Santa and Mrs. Claus went up on the fire truck ladder and kind of got the crowd going to light the tree. And then we had a real tree this year with the help of Abbott hoisting that up for us, getting it decorated. So we're excited to see that. The Coco Crawl continued to grow this year. We had 37 businesses that participated, so that's a record since we've had that event. Moving on to page five, the "We Belong in Bartlett" campaign launched this past summer. We kind of kicked off that a little bit with the Fourth of July Parade and handing out and shooting off branded t-shirts at the parade to our residents. A5, our branding consultant, conducted several photo shoots throughout the summer and the fall. They went to Bartlett Hills and met with many of our local businesses and did interviews with them. We also had some media buys with WGN and Fox News, including a Small Business Saturday commercial with the mayor. WGN conducted a hometown takeover in the village, and they got to interview many of our community stakeholders and some of our businesses. And then they also produced a long-form commercial for our first-ever Restaurant Week. So we were very excited to see that. I think it looked very good. Overall, throughout the initial campaign here this summer and fall, we've totaled nearly a million impressions, including likes and shares and views all combined. So it's had a pretty good reach. Moving on to page six, the village created a new Tax Increment Finance District along Lake Street this past fall. This is really going to be a major focus for our Economic Development staff for the next several years, where we're going to look to use those TIF benefits to help attract some developers. Additionally, some of those next steps are, you know, looking at the potential for an Oak Street realignment, creating a marketing plan for the district, and further conversations with U46 about the Eastview site. In addition to the TIF, the village has been able to use sales tax rebates pretty successfully recently. Some of those has helped us land Moore Brewing, Aldi, the auto malls on Route 20, so we'll continue to work on that. Are we good with time? Further, over on page six, the bike path underpass connecting the east and west sides of Route 59 is in the early stages. The village received a $150,000 grant through Cook County for the engineering portion of that project, which is beginning. And additionally, we'll be applying for another Cook County grant for the construction portion of that. Lastly, skipping to page nine, the museum has been providing entertainment for all ages throughout this past fiscal year, including a walking tour that kind of looked more at the history of Bartlett's tree history, which is actually pretty interesting, and then also fulfilled one of our Tree City USA certifications. So it was kind of a double whammy there, as well as they partnered with Moore Brewing and the Chamber of Commerce to host an event at the Village Hall this year.
I just wanted to chime in before Sam moves on from the narrative portion. One of the things that Administration worked pretty hard on was our Waste Hauler Agreement. And starting this year, residents will be paying two cents more a month. That's two cents than they were in 2015, 10 years ago. And one of the things that sometimes we overlook when we assess the fees in the Waste Hauler Agreement are the sticker prices. The sticker will remain $2 until 2030. You would have had to go back a quarter of a century to find a cheaper rate for our residents at $2 a sticker. So that program is all-inclusive, and we're happy with those price points.
Fantastic.
And that's really the gist of the narrative portion, so.
All right. Thank you, Sam. Appreciate that highlight. We will entertain a motion to adjourn until after the Board meeting.
So moved.
Brought by Trustee Danny, seconded by Trustee Swansky. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Danny?
Yes.
Gansey?
Yes.
Gunstein?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Laporte?
Yes.
Swansky?
Yes.
We are adjourned until further notice. Once again, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Village of Bartlett Committee of the Whole Meeting for March 4, 2025. I call this meeting back to order and ask the clerk to, again, please call the roll.
Trustee Danny?
Here.
Gansey?
Here.
Gunstein?
Here.
Hopkins?
Here.
Laporte?
Here.
Swansky?
Here.
President Wallace? Here. Well, we'll start this portion of the committee meeting with a Town Hall. So if anyone would like to address the Board during the committee meeting, kindly step up to the podium and state your name, bill, and address for the record, and try to keep your comments in there.
10 minutes?
You're the chief.
Yeah, right. Name is William Gabrenia. Address is 33741 Mary Byrne in Wayne. Good evening, Village President, Board of Trustees, and members of the community. First, I want to take a moment to recognize and express my sincere gratitude to the Fourth of July Committee volunteers for their hard work, dedication, and commitment to making our annual celebration one of the best in the country. Each year, you dedicate countless hours to organizing an event that brings our community together in the spirit of patriotism and pride. From coordinating logistics to ensuring a family-friendly atmosphere, your efforts do not go unnoticed. And I want to thank you for all that you do. There's a few of them in the room. Tonight, I'm here to discuss an important matter regarding the safety of our Fourth of July celebration. As your Fire Chief alongside Police Chief Prakallis, we have been entrusted with the responsibility of ensuring that this celebration remains safe, secure, and enjoyable for all attendees. We take this responsibility seriously, as both of us are subject matter experts in public safety. We have dedicated our careers to protecting this community. I want this phrase to soak in: subject matter experts. No one else in this room has more experience, training, or education in public safety than the two individuals you have entrusted to protect this community and make it one of the safest in the country. Our recommendations are not based on personal bias. They are based on our expertise, real-world experience, and unwavering commitment to public safety. Our sole priority is to protect our residents, ensuring that this event remains a safe and welcoming environment for all. Let's not forget the safety of our police officers and firefighters. Over the past few years, we have observed a concerning trend: bad actors taking advantage of the late-night carnival hours. While the majority of attendees come to enjoy the rides, games, and festivities, we have seen an increase in disruptive behavior and public safety concerns during the later evening hours. Our goal is to take a proactive measure before a more serious incident occurs. Modifying the carnival's operating hours will reduce late-night activity and ensure a safer environment for families and residents. Adjusting the hours will allow us to maintain the integrity of the event, keep it family-friendly, and reduce the strain on our public safety resources. I ask for your support in making this necessary change. By working together, we can continue to host a Fourth of July celebration that is safe, welcoming, and enjoyable for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Anybody else like to address the Board at this time? Dominic, is there anyone online that would like to address the Board? Thanks, John. Is he in like the Wizard of Oz room back there or something?
It is. There's the technical.
Okay. We wouldn't have noticed. Thank you. Hearing none, we'll move to the Standing Committee reports. First Standing Committee reporter is Police and Health Committee Chairman Swansky.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Police Department is requesting that the Village Board shorten the Bartlett Fourth of July carnival hours from 11:00 PM to 10:00 PM on Thursday, July 3, 2025, and Saturday, July 5, 2025, due to growing safety concerns stemming from an increase in juvenile-related incidents at the carnival. Many surrounding communities end their carnivals at 10:00 PM. Our goal here is to enhance our community events and continue safety practices surrounding our community events. Turn this over to Chief Brett Kellis for discussion.
Thank you, Trustee Swansky. You know, I had the opportunity to meet with every single one of you to express my concerns, and I just want to echo what Chief Gabrenia mentioned. This isn't a personal decision. As I mentioned to all of you, out of all the people from the Police Department, I've been a part of the Fourth of July probably 24 out of the 28 years that I've been here. And it's a growing trend. We've just seen an increase in juvenile instances, which you've all received in my memos of the different stuff that has occurred. Even after implementing different safety precautions, such as no masks, no backpacks, the next day, we ended up having to arrest an individual for trespassing and getting into an argument with one of our police officers. So it doesn't matter what type of staffing we have there. It doesn't hap, as you saw in the video too, it doesn't matter what staffing we have. It doesn't matter what type of safety precautions we have. These problems will persist. As the old saying goes, nothing good happens at a certain point of time. And as you saw in the video, that is not the Bartlett Fest that we are all used to and accustomed to and welcoming to. So for those reasons, despite increased staffing and police presence, these problems persist. And I believe they will continue to persist. And therefore, that is why I strongly recommend that the carnival's closing time be moved to 10:00 PM on those two nights, except on the Fourth of July. And this adjustment would not only allow or align with the closing time set by many nearby communities for their carnival operations, but also is expected to reduce some of the number of juvenile-related incidents that occur in the carnival area. I appreciate your support.
Chief, can you please share why we wouldn't just shorten the carnival to 10 o'clock across the board?
Well, one thing that the Police Department tries to do, we try to be very accommodating as we could. If you really wanted my opinion, I think the carnival should be shut down at 9 o'clock. That's when the incident happened. But I do understand, you know, based on what other municipalities have done, we thought that 10 o'clock would be a good starting point. And we've always been trying to be very accommodating to the Fourth of July Committee and as well as to the carnival. For instance, in years past, on their busiest night, the Fourth of July, we used to shut down the carnival right after the fireworks. And there was no cry from the carnival company or the Fourth of July Committee that they lost any money. Secondly, two years ago, when the Fourth of July Committee ended early, one of their executive board members approached the Police Department and asked if we can open up early. And we do what we always do, we accommodated them. I didn't go to the Board. I didn't go to Paula. I went to my staff and said, "We're going to open up early." And we stopped it. So we were just looking for a happy median. And, you know, I just want to do this and echo what the Fire Chief mentioned. This is for the safety of the community. So for the longer hours for the Fourth of July is, you know, based on being there, we can prove that the funnel cake lines, the concession lines, the game lines, the ticket lines, the ride lines, they have a very big crowd, a very big crowd. Secondly, we have our entire staff, including me, there, you know, in case something would go awry. And then lastly, also too, it helps with our traffic plan. By keeping the carnival open, not everybody leaves at the same time, which puts stress on our different roadways, because there's only one way in each direction. By keeping it open, you know, it actually opens up the roadways in a much faster manner.
Thank you.
I think we received an email from the Fourth of July Committee, and they're willing to accept these shorter hours and help just fund them a little bit more for fireworks or whatever, for some lost revenue. I think that's more than fair. I think it's accommodating. And I'm okay with that, so.
I agree. I feel like this whole conversation shows how important the Fourth of July event is to everyone in Bartlett, that we really truly feel like a community, that that's when we get to see all our friends and family, bring people into our town. And I'm happy that we have the people that are the subject matter experts for safety and that bring stuff to our attention. I want that. I also want to thank everyone on the Fourth of July Committee, because I feel like you are the subject matter experts for fun and getting that event going and all the hard, and I now firsthand have seen how much work is put into it. So I just want to thank everybody, because this is our community, and I think, yeah, let's make it amazing again this year. Maybe some changes, and it's hard, but I agree with Trustee Hopkins in adding a little more funding for it.
I saw the video also, like we all did. And my reaction, I was extremely disgusted. I was absolutely concerned. And we have an opportunity now of working in conjunction with the Fourth of July Committee. And I'd like to see something happen, because in my opinion, this is a warning. Next year, you know, if somebody gets hurt or injured, how do you put a value on somebody's, you know, injury or even a life? You know, I don't want to see something like this be like a Highland Park, which it wouldn't be, hopefully, but I don't want to see anybody hurt or injured in this. And if we can work in conjunction with the Fourth of July Committee, you know, I think that's beneficial to everyone that's involved.
Can the carnival open an hour earlier to compensate for the loss on the backend? And maybe do some exciting events that bring people in so they spend money that first hour, so we don't have to fund them?
I think that's a fantastic out-of-the-box idea.
Yeah, I don't know. How do we determine, did we get any documentation, Chief, about the amount that they were going to lose allegedly for not opening those two hours?
Until recently, the carnival company hasn't been able to provide it, nor were they willing to provide it. I do believe that just recently, they did present some type of figure. I don't know where that came from. I just saw that in a recent email, and I think which came to the discussion to the Board in regard to the $2,000 figure.
Well, I mean, we've been doing this so long, I'm assuming that if we fund the Fourth of July Committee at the existing level, and then they come back to us after the event and say, "Hey, we lost $2,000," I'm sure the Board would be more than happy to compensate them for that. But it doesn't make any sense to compensate them upfront if we don't know if they're going to lose any money.
Well, it's assuming it doesn't rain, there's no tornadoes.
Yeah. Yeah, there's so many extenuating circumstances that can cause any of that. That's the way I would do it.
What's our maximum that we would give?
I think last year was $14,000 that we provided.
Kevin, I think it was 12, and they are asking for two more.
12 is what we have traditionally given to the Fourth of July Committee. During the pandemic, we doubled it, or we increased it, I'm sorry, to about 20, I think. And then with the matrix that we have for civic funding, the maximum is 15. The requests from the Carnival Committee, the Fourth of July Committee, is 14, so an additional 2,000.
Plus the $40,000 for police personnel.
Yeah. It's got to be more than that.
Well, according to...
About $10,000 a day just for police. That's not including the support from Public Works.
How much would private security cost if the Bartlet...
Not in favor of private security, Joe. Private security, I think...
If the police chose not to participate?
Pardon?
If the police chose not to participate, how much would private security cost the Carnival Committee?
I don't know, but I think private security has a limit to their abilities, and the Police Department would be involved regardless.
So if the Fourth of July Committee decided to say, "You know what? We're not interested in it," what would it cost staff to staff this whole thing and put on the event?
It would just go by the wayside like other communities have done.
Yeah, Ribfest is no longer in Naperville. They chose not to do it anymore.
I know, but I think, I mean, from my standpoint, I would still want to do a fair like this, and I think it's important. So also, I think to note, from what I've heard from conversations from Chief Prakallis and from Ms. Schumacher, the Bartlett Fourth of July Fest gets their funding from the carnival in one lump sum, no matter if it's rain or shine. It's paid... It's paid no matter what, and I think it's a contract here, and them being told that their fair is going to shut down, they're negotiating that, and they are going to reduce the dollar amount.
My knowledge about the carnival contract is just anecdotal, but I'm sure you guys can talk about--
Yeah, yeah, answer some questions for us, that'd be great. And I don't think, I don't think anybody on this board is going to not approve $2,000 extra dollars, that's not the point here, I'm just kind of curious as to how this works.
My name's Austin Hopkins, 976 South Chippendales Bartlett. I am the, I chair the subcommittee for, on the Fourth of July Committee for the carnival, and yes, our contract is a flat rate, rain or shine, which a lot of festivals and villages and municipalities, they don't get that deal. It's always, it's usually based on a percentage. So we are lucky, our carnival contract, or our vendor, has been doing this with Bartlett for over 30 years, and the reason why they set that up is because they love coming to Bartlett, and they know that when this committee started, is they needed that guarantee, and so that's something that they've been able to honor time and time again. I did reach out to them, I have been in communications with him over this, and he's busy, he's running stuff down in Texas right now, they're starting their season up and everything like that. He did get back to me, he says if the hours get reduced, that it would be a $2,000 loss, or they would reduce our guarantee payment by $2,000. So, and that's the way it's looking, which is fine, you know, again, we rely on that income. We have our major sources of income, which is the carnival, which is beer, and then is also the money that we receive from the village, we also receive money from our food vendors, you know, so those are our major sources, and $2,000 might not seem like a lot, but as you can see, weather events have been causing us--
Difference between a really bad band and a really good band.
I mean, honestly, I mean, it comes down to, I mean, you look at our fireworks and our bands--
Yeah.
--and all these other little things that we have to do, so $2,000 might not seem like a lot, but to our committee, it's a lot of money.
Yeah, and like I said before, I don't think there's any, I shouldn't speak for the whole board, but I don't have any problem with the extra funding, I just needed a basis for it, and you just gave it to me, so. I think that's not a big deal.
Austin?
But does the, does an hour earlier help it, or no?
No, we, I've discussed, I discussed that with our carnival contractor, our vendor, early on, and he says their money's not made in the beginning, it's made in the evening, that's where they make most of their money. And a lot of the times, because they're closing down, so let's say that, you know, because they closed down at 11:00 before, so they would stop their ticket sales and everything at around 9:45, 10:00 o'clock, so now if they're closing at 10:00, now they have to stop their ticket sales an hour before that, so that's where they're losing that money. You have all those people there, but yet they can't sell any more tickets.
One of the things you might mention to them, Austin, that came up a couple of times when I had my kids there, is we were running around buying tickets from other people, because they really don't announce that much, like what time the ticket sales end, you just go over there and it's closed.
Yeah, and I think they vary based on how many people there, I think if they see, like, hey, there's a lot of people here, with, you know, maybe we can stay open a little bit longer, or, I think it varies, but that's something I can definitely take back to them, so they have--
Yeah, just post it, "Hey, beware."
Yeah, I know this question is going to be asked, so I'm going to ask it. How receptive would the carnival be next year of having it end at 10:00 for all the nights that would be there?
Something I would have to talk with them, our contract runs through 2026.
Okay, answer the question.
So, we would still, so we have this year and next year on that, on that contract.
Thank you.
I think emotions are high with the subject that was brought up, that's been ongoing for quite a while, and I think those emotions are part of the passion that both sides of the Police Department, the Fire Department, and the Committee have, and I think collectively, we have to get back to what we do best, and that's putting on an event that people come from miles around for. So I greatly appreciate the safety aspect, you know, from both Chiefs, and I do appreciate what the Fourth of July Committee does, because I don't think they get enough recognition for the amount of hours that they put in it, and this is just seen firsthand, there's a lot of people that give up family time on that committee on Fourth of July weekend, where they could be at their lake house or their boats, or, you know, doing stuff like that, so it is an event that I can promise you, as long as I'm on this board, it will not dissolve, so.
Yeah, we do appreciate all your time, again. Austin, we appreciate your time and the whole crew, so. And again, I would just reiterate that we need to make sure that any event that we have, be it Oktoberfest or anything, we need to first and foremost take Chief Grubenian, Chief Procalis's advice when it comes to what their recommendations are, and make sure that we're taking those to whatever contracts we're actually trying to propose. So that's something that we continually have to do, and be in real, because everybody up here is primarily interested in the safety at this event.
Yes.
And when the chief comes up with a suggestion, we're going to take it to heart, and we need, and both chiefs, and we need to make sure that we're respecting that.
Well, if there's a dangerous element at the carnival, you're going to lose revenue, because I'm leaving, I'm taking my wife and we're leaving, because I'm not going to feel safe there, even, I know you guys, but if I see a dangerous element, I'm going to leave. So you're going to lose revenue, and then you're increasing the liability, so it's a double-edged sword, so I lean to the side of safety as well.
Yeah.
This could happen at any time, this is, you know, this doesn't happen just at night, it could happen first thing in the morning, so.
Good. Well, we know from our sound ordinance, though, most of the calls come in around 11:00 or 12:00, so, you know, like Chief said, nothing good happens after 10:00 p.m. or 11:00 p.m.
That's just--
Thank you, Chairman Swansky. I'm sorry, is there any other comments? Thank you, Chairman Swansky. Next item we have on our committee this evening is Public Works and Gulf Committee Chairman Dane.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Let me ask a question before I start. Will this be on the Committee, the Board to vote on? Next--
We're just giving our advice on this.
I think the--
Austin, you got what you needed, right? All right.
Carnival, the carnival application that you approve in the summer for the Fest stipulates the carnival hours, and the budget that you approve in April will include the addition of the 2,000 for additional community funding for Fourth of July.
Yep. And it still keeps it inside of our matrix. All right, so--
We have the water and sewer rate study, request for quote, it's a review. Yeah, we discussed this at February 4th meeting, the village is looking to complete a formal study to determine appropriate sewer and water rates to properly fund existing and future operational capital needs. The study will also look into implementing a stormwater funding source, and in our packet we had a draft proposal of the RFQ, and it states that staff alone implement any changes that we have on the RFQ under May 6th board meeting. The consultant also will conduct a study, submit a report, present their findings and data to the Board for future rate adjustments. No rate changes will be proposed until the study is completed and has been presented. Tyler, or Danny? Yeah, please.
Thank you, Chairman Dane. So we've talked about the water rate study quite a bit during the capital and budgeting process. We just wanted to put this by you, just to make sure we have everything right before we go out and seek requests from consultants that would do this study, and so we can get the study started, and the goal is to bring a contract to you by most likely the first meeting in May, so that they can work on it during the summer and fall, bring a report back to you before the end of the year, so that during the capital budget discussion, we can have an idea of what those rates, recommendations, and structure, and that whole thing, how that would play out, and what we can fund for that capital program, so that's the goal for the whole thing. I think it incorporates everything that we've talked about, just wanted to make sure, they're looking at the infrastructure of both the sewer and the water, capital program, operating program, the uniqueness of our county rates for sewer, they'll evaluate that, make sure that those are appropriately allocated. We included the stormwater, we had some discussions on that. What this is, is more of seeing what other communities are doing, what their rate structure is, and then seeing, this would not be a full implementation of a stormwater utility or rate or anything like that, but it gives us some feedback as far as what are other communities doing, and what would make sense for the Village of Bartlett, and what type of money we would need to fund a stormwater utility. So with that, I'm hoping for any questions or modifications.
I looked at the proposal of the--
Ray, we can't hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry. I looked at it, I have nothing to add to it, I said, send it out, and let's see what the response is.
One thing I would, go ahead.
Who would be some of the firms that would be able to be qualified to do this?
We're going to reach out to both engineering and finance, because both sides do it, both have their unique looks at things, you know, obviously it's rates, so you're talking a lot of finances, and we're looking, we're hoping there's a team out there, I know there are, and that's who we're going to reach out to, that would bring both, both engineers to look at more of the infrastructure part of it, but then the finance people that would look at the whole rate structure and that type of thing, and if we can get a blend of that, I think we can get a study that would really help us out.
I know we always talk about what neighboring communities do, bringing us within line with what other communities do, and one thing I've noticed about other communities is they have a separate budget for their sewer treatment plant, and it's a separate, you know, like streets, sewer, water, there's a treatment plant, and that's covered under one budget, and I think it helps us make decisions, because we see it in front of us, and it's not convoluted in everything else that goes on within sewer. So that's something that I would like to see and have them take a look at also.
Okay.
Anyone else? That's it, Mr. President.
Thank you, Chairman Dane. And now, back to our earlier scheduled program, Finance Committee Chairman Laporte.
Thank you. We will continue our exciting discussion on reviews, review of the proposed budget.
Just one second. Dan, before I forget, when you go through this, sorry, just popped into my simple mind, I think it's a good idea to keep, when we hear it back, they hear it back, a good idea to keep that theme of where we want the village to be lined up. Do we want us to be an eight? This is what it means to be an eight. Do we want us to be, you know, a seven? I think that, at least for me, that's something that you guys have brought up recently, and that's really helped us to explain it to residents in a common way. You know, we can be a five, and your water rate's going to be here, or your sewer rate's going to be here, whatever, or we can be an eight, and this is what it's going to take.
If the consultant can determine, is it water and sewer rates that are funding those projects, or are they getting money from another bucket to help fund those projects? So we're kind of looking at it as water and sewer, and then wastewater, I guess, so three categories. Are the residents of those cities paying for those improvements through these three charges, or is there an additional source where they're getting funding that helps?
Yeah.
Yeah, they'll look at some of that, as well as, part of it is looking at additional grants that maybe we're not aware of, that are out there, that we can apply to help fund some of these projects as well.
Come on, we know Tyler's aware of every grant, and the United--
Try to get everything we can, but--
Sorry, Joe.
I will just say that the work that the GIS team has done, and Dan has done, and his staff has done, on the asset management, you know, that's something we just started in the last couple of years, to collect the data on the age and the maintenance and those costs have really helped us to be able to peg that level of service stuff there.
Sorry for reversing back. Now Chairman Laporte.
Yep, thank you, Mr. President. We'll go back to reviewing the proposed budget, we'll pick up with Sam, and we were talking about admin.
All right, welcome back to the Administration Department's budget. So moving on to page 10 of our budget, I mentioned it earlier, I know Jeff Chief mentioned it earlier, but I just kind of want to hit this point home. If you look at our activity measures, that social media followers line item, or that line, you know, we're almost at 30,000 followers for, across our social media, and the vast majority of that is really our Facebook page, so for a town of 41,000, you know, it's certainly quite a bit of reach, which really helps with our, you know, our event advertising, as well as some of the serious, you know, accidents and things that we post about and other emergencies, so that's, you know, something to really be proud of, especially anyone that has anything to do with our social media page and administration, as well as the Police Department. Moving on, we have no personnel or capital requests. Looking at pages 13 and 14, these conferences, for the most part, are all unchanged from previous years, there is one additional conference, the Illinois Public Service Institute for one employee. This is a training that a couple of our employees from the Public Works Department have already attended, really comes highly recommended for local government-based leadership and supervisory training, and that is, again, the Illinois Public Service Institute training. Moving on, 15 and 16, these associations, again, are all unchanged from our last year's budget, all the same stuff we had budgeted for previously. Moving on to page 17, this is really where a lot of the Administration Department's changes can be seen. You'll see the service agreements line item up 1,300% this year. I touched on that a little bit, that's some of our transfers from Central Services, so that includes our Clark mosquito abatement for DuPage, the Code Red funding, and the Bart Letter printing, and those were all transferred, were previously budgeted in Central Services and transferred into Administration, so that's where that jump is from. Looking at the economic incentives line item, this is up 30%, and that's really for additional sales tax rebate expected for the Bartlett Auto Mall. Over the last several months, that, those sales are up pretty significantly, so we are expecting to increase that budget amount, and you can kind of see the details of that on page 18, I can see that increase. And lastly, the other large increase in our budget comes from our Community Relations line item. We do have some additional funding in there for our event funding, but the majority of that is $45,000 for an artificial tree. The tree would be roughly 35 feet with a maximum of 41 feet tall, and that would be, like, you can buy growth rings, they call them, so you can add three feet, you know, to the tree, so we would anticipate getting roughly 35 feet for this first year. And then the other portion of that, Community Relations line item, is the civic group funding. We talked about Fourth of July tonight, and in this budget, it says 12, so I think we would raise that to 14 based on this discussion. Arts in Bartlett does have an increase, as well as Oktoberfest. Last year, Ignite the Courage was a first-time requister, they requested 8,000, and the Village Board granted them 3,500, because they were a first-year requister. This year, they are requesting 10, so that's kind of one of the additional changes, but that kind of covers most of our changes, so I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Why did they go from 8 to 10?
They didn't say specifically the increase, but they just included their, you know, their budget for their event, staging, the cost of, you know, tables, chairs, tent, that sort of thing.
How many-day event is that?
I also think that that event is growing in size and in popularity from year to year, so I think maybe that is just kind of an annual bump in what they anticipate the attendance to be.
I, just from our earlier conversation, I mean, it was, it's $2,000 we're adding to a newer event, when the Fourth of July Committee has been 12 grand for four or five years, so, you know, I'm just pointing that out. I think that, you know, we should reevaluate that if we're going to give more money to one group and not the other.
Budget, I'm sorry, Sam. We budget for what their requests are, those are entirely at your discretion, so if you, you know, that's why we have the matrix that has maximums, but you are certainly within your purview to make those dollars be whatever you want them to be. within your purview to make those dollars be whatever you want them to be.
What is the maximum, 12?
So for their expenses and expenditures for their event, it's about 66,000. So that would put them in the 10,000 maximum range for that size event.
Okay. So if the, another event was 100,000?
Yeah, so that sections between 50,000 and 100, anything over 100, the maximum's 15.
15, okay.
Yeah, and that's expenditures for the.
I just think we should make it fair across the board, so.
That's why we have the matrix, right?
Yes, yes.
Behind the cost of the event.
Yeah, that was the idea behind the matrix.
Did they use the 3,500 last year? Did they receive that?
They did.
4,000, I forgot what it was.
Yeah, 3,500, they did, yep, yes. Yeah, so Oktoberfest is another example, they are requesting 12 this year. Based on the matrix, they would be at the 10 amount for a maximum. But again, that's just a suggested amount, but it's up to your discretion at one point.
The 4th of July has more of a financial impact and burden on our staff as well as our police department than the other events, I would assume, right?
So if the question, did I hear the question right? I had to do, is our staffing levels the same? Is that correct?
The staff involvement for 4th of July, I have to assume is more than it would be for Oktoberfest or Ignite the Courage, correct?
It's significantly way higher at 4th of July Fest.
Okay.
As we discussed, we generally have 14 to 16 officers there, and then for the other events, we have possibly two to four, if that.
Okay. I just wanted to let that resonate. Go ahead.
Hey, Sam, can you explain, and as a board member, I should probably know this, but I don't, the association that apparently we all belong to, DuPage Mayors and Managers and the Northwest Municipal Conference.
I can take, I can take DuPage Mayor and Managers.
It seems like a big expense.
It is, it is our major lobbying and legislative arm. The DuPage Mayor and Managers is the Conference of Mayors. It is what we use to keep abreast of, you know, the governor's budget, any kind of legislation that's coming down the pike. If you recall, we used to have a lobbyist that dealt with our particular issues, special to Bartlett, like the school disconnection. We found that we can be more effective on the broader issues like pension reform, LDGF is the big one, by amplifying our voice within the COGS. The COG dues are based on population, so it's a flat number. We find that being involved in both DuPage Mayor and Managers and Northwest Municipal Conference also gives us opportunities for grant funding, especially for roads. Many of the state grants are distributed through those COGS.
Okay.
That's why we're members, and that's.
What I'm looking at here, it says employee name and it said village board, so I just took the 22.5 for DuPage County Mayors, divided by the seven of us, it comes to 3,000.
Oh, no.
Okay. So I was just thinking, if I have a membership and it's $3,000, I need to be taking advantage of it, so that's why I asked what it was.
It's by, it's by population and I am the chair of the Transportation Policy Committee. I'll be the assistant chair next year because I'm busy, but Scott is on the Legislative Committee and Dan will be a new member on that Legislative Committee.
And pretty soon you'll be the chair, like I was.
Yeah, no, they'll suck him into the board for sure.
You'll be the chair of the DuPage Mayor and Managers at some point.
Don't tell them that.
Everybody takes a turn.
You're not supposed to tell them that until he's got to a meeting.
I heard already.
Get me in trouble. But we find them tremendously valuable and it spreads out some costs.
I just, I saw employee name and how much it costs and I'm like, well, maybe we should.
Last year Stephanie went on the, on the bus trip down to lobby in Springfield and that was with DuPage Mayor and Managers too.
All right, perfect.
I drove because I don't bus it.
Attend these events, is that an additional cost or is that included?
Depends on what it is, the ride down, that's not an additional cost. They'll have some legislative coffees with our state legislators, those are usually included. The other thing that we do have is District 6 county meetings that are organized through DuPage Mayor and Managers, and those are tremendously useful because we get to sit around the table with our county representatives and get their ear one-on-one that, you know, when we were going through the water transition, being able to talk to Jim Zay directly and lobby for what our needs are was really helpful. So I think it's an occasional dinner, they have them, like, I think twice a year.
We still pay in the Bartlett Examiner? I just saw a note in here, just want to make sure that we don't have like bad debt with them or something.
They weren't defunct when we did our budget, but we still do have to publish places unless the publishing legislation passes, that's one that we're lobbying hard on.
Any other questions?
So far, so good.
I mean, that really.
Go closer to the mic, Sam.
I'm sorry, that really covers what I have, you know, the.
I have a question, page 20. On page 20, it says, go from one to two full-time social workers.
Oh, that is, that's the next one, that is professional services, but.
Oh, sorry.
The social worker under professional services.
Oh, okay.
Please.
Okay. All right, I'll keep my question.
I have one more question. Under administration, I know in 2019 and 2020, the budget was 1.8 and the proposed one's 3.4, and I know we've merged things. Can you talk about that a little bit?
Sure. When we reconfigured the finance department to take out information services, information services and finance to add the central services.
Budget? Oh, I'm sorry. So when we reconfigured those departments, it made sense to break out central services. And as you saw throughout the budget review, it's been allocated to the departments. Those costs have not, or those costs are calculated the same as they would be under central services, but now they're in the departments that are more responsible for them, and we took the biggest hit of those.
Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Yep. Golf?
Good.
The flu that has hit police department has also hit golf. So Phil is sick and Scott is going to step up and do the golf end of golf. And then we have Matt and Paul to talk about the other.
What page do we have golf on?
171.
171.
Yep, that's correct.
I always wanted to be the golf professional when I grew up, so this is pretty sad that this is the closest I'll get. But I will take you through the golf budget and take you through the narrative and then kick it to Matt and Paul for their, their line items as well. We're really excited about this year. This will be the second year in a row we're projecting to be in the black. We had several years in the red and we were digging out of it. We were in the black this year and we anticipate being in the black next year. A couple of the highlights from this season really is looking at our event counts. You'll see on page 172 that staff projects 40 large events. Since the transcription of this document, we've secured an additional four and we're talking to a fifth, so golf is looking at 45 events for this year, which would be a record. We're also, another thing that's outdated since the transcription of this is 45 weddings. We now have 49. That is the most weddings that we've had, it's the second most weddings we've had in 15 years. We're, our record high since the village took over the golf course was 62 weddings. So we're creeping up on that number and the work that food and beverage has done to get there is pretty remarkable. And we've done that with one less full-time equivalent in the food and beverage department. So we're seeing record highs across the board with one less full-time equivalent, so I wanted to mention that. In terms of, we're looking at doing more driving range, we're looking to maximize profits on the driving range by offering additional bucket sizes and different price points. We're looking at running a happy hour from three to six. Our food and beverage revenues are expected to be 5% over the current budget and 8% over the 24-25. Once again, we are projecting record midway and beverage cart sales for the fifth straight year. A lot of that is the changes we've made to those operations, impulse purchases, forward-facing advertising, and a lot of those suggestions came from the DIA, so we really appreciate that. Other highlights too that we're excited about is embarking on our 100th anniversary, which is going to be 2026. So we're looking forward to rolling out several events that commemorate that as well. Moving on to the next page, one of the things that, that we continue to grow is our social media, looking at, there's always something happening at Bartlett Hills. Oh, one thing I did, I failed to mention about our events is we don't have a Saturday available this year until November, so that's really good. And we don't have any, I think our first Friday availability is August, so that's also another thing I wanted to point out.
Is that for golf or banquet?
That's for banquets, yeah, November.
What was August, what was August, because I might have a golf outing, I have somebody interested that was at the Bourbon night in hosting a fundraiser golf outing and then possibly a banquet after.
Yeah, we have some Fridays open for sure. Our Bourbon night was very successful, we're looking at doing that again in the fall along with some other events.
In lieu of the Bourbon cigar night, I think you could have a vodka at cigar night.
We can always look into that.
Yeah, they attract that huge population of Russian folks that we have in the village.
Ray, you did drink vodka.
And Ray.
Some of the other things too are retooling our menu, looking at the possibility of pre-ordering on the course to capture the golfers that are there and giving them an opportunity to order meals, so that way they're hot and ready when they get into the clubhouse. Another thing that the food and beverage department is going to be doing is grilling most weekends all summer long, so we're really excited about that. We've seen some shifts in staffing and we now see the opportunity to do that. So we're going to be lighting the grill all weekend long and increasing those impulse buys that has led to our record revenues in both the midway as well as the beverage cart. Moving on to some of the goals here, and on page 174, another thing I wanted to highlight was for the first time ever, we hold all three major wedding accolades, which is Zola, the Wedding Wire and the Knot, and all three of those titles are in our possession, so that's something we're very excited about as well. One of the other highlights is continuation of rebuilding the bunkers in-house. We were quoted, we got a couple quotes in excess of $650,000 and Matt and his staff have been able to do most of that for $17,699 and it's, he's done a remarkable job. In some of the 24-25 highlights, staff continues to develop enhanced menus. The new casual package that was implemented just a short time ago has increased profit margins and is responsible for 28% of our weddings in 2025.
What is a casual package?
I'll let Paul.
Well, that's a package that people think, a casual package is what we really formulated for the people coming out of COVID that wanted something unique and something a little less formal and in their eyes, a little bit less expensive also.
Hopefully that's what my, my future daughter-in-law picked for her wedding shower.
I, we can, there are many packages available, so we can go through that. Basically, it gives a more informal presentation, it gives us the opportunity to do an event with a lot less labor, probably half the amount of people, and the food that we serve for about the same price as the regular wedding package probably costs half of what it does anyway. So you can only increase revenue so much to go ahead and offset all the costs, this was a way to kind of give them what they want, but kind of give us a way to get the bottom line a little bit better also.
Thank you, yeah.
I don't know, I don't know if you noticed in the five last couple of weeks, and since Paul's, or Phil's not here, I wanted to mention that he's been able to recruit some new larger golf outings at a price point higher than, than we have seen in the last couple of years, and that's really attributable to, you know, the great reputation of Bartlett Hills for running outings, but also the condition of our course that's really elevated and, and I'm sure Matt will get into the specifics of that.
Yeah, and the specifics that he doesn't like to toot his horn, but if the board remembers when we, when Matt was talking about that irrigation system, it will pay for itself with things like this because the course will speak for itself. The word around other communities gets around and I can attest to how many people tell me that Bartlett is the best municipal course they've ever played.
So I also want to mention the quality of their food. Dustin is doing one great job out there. The steaks that we had the other night, I mean, it just, it was, the food has been overall been unbelievably fantastic.
And people are coming, people are coming from other areas. We were, we were on the simulator, I think it was November, December, and a former WGN weatherman and three other guys were just wrapping up a fall golf and they, they said they love coming out to Bartlett Hills and none of them live near here, so.
It was from Evanston.
Yeah.
Moving on, on page five, there's not too many changes, those are all pretty consistent. Page six, there's no personnel requests. Page seven, there are two capital outlay requests. One is the new golf carts, the existing fleet is five, is seven years old. Common practice for fleet exchange at a golf course of our nature falls within the four to six range, and we were able to keep these carts for seven years due to the proficient maintenance that Matt and his staff have done. The other item is shop fixtures and displays. The current fixtures within the pro shop are from 1997, so that is the other item that is in there.
What are fixtures? What are we, what are we classified in?
Tables, display racks, countertops, things that will give a nice presentation of the retail that we want to move. Some of them are peeling, some of them are starting to break, they're 28 years old.
Do they swap the GPS out of the old carts and put them in the new?
Yes, they do.
Okay.
Is it cheaper to lease golf carts in the long run or no?
Yeah.
So this is a five-year lease.
Okay.
So this, for this budget, we won't have, we won't make any payment, we'll use the trade-in of our current fleet, so it's really years two through five where it'll be an expense. I still have to record an expense because we received the vehicles.
I got you. Are they, are they that, ready to be replaced? I mean, we just put.
I've never had a bad one.
We just put the GPS in them.
Yeah.
It seems like they.
I could talk about the carts and stuff. Every day our mechanic Trey, he has to go down and there's a sick bay in the basement and there's four or five carts in the sick bay, most nights that he has to pull up to our shop and he spends half his day in the summertime fixing the golf carts and stuff due to all the issues they are having.
I just know we came off of a big sprinkler project and it'd be nice not to have a big expense at one time.
Currently, we own the golf carts and now you want to lease the golf carts?
So it's a five-year lease to buy at the end, so we, we own them at the end of the lease.
I think that's how we've done it.
It is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we could get like, I mean, I don't know, just as being a golfer, when I go play at different places. And we could get like, I mean, I don't know, just as being a golfer, when I go play at different places, the, the seat comfortability, if that's a word, makes a difference. And because it, it actually steps the level up to say, hey, I like those carts, yeah.
The presentation of every detail on the golf course allows us to raise our, our user fees as well.
Can we put stereos in them too?
You could do that, no.
Oh, please.
Uh, moving on to page eight...
What did you say about recording the expense, but it's not like an actual expense? I kind of didn't understand that.
Yeah, so, it's an accounting thing. Um, so, next year, we won't be making any payment, but I still have to record the expense because we received the equipment. So, we record an expense, but that expense is backed out when we capitalize this. So, for this next budget year, the golf carts might actually make the golf course look better. It's years two through five where there's the depreciation expense that we'll start to see the cost.
Uh, moving on to page five, professional development. There's no changes in any of these line items. These are ones that, uh, have been in there for, uh, several years. Golf program, again, there are no changes from several, uh, several of the past years to this year. They're all existing. Um, and page ten, you see the line item detail. Um, the golf carts are recognized there at the bottom. Uh, moving on to page eleven, these agreements are all existing. And...
How do we track the simulator revenue?
Um, the simulator revenue is tracked within our rounds. Um, we do know, we do know what, how much dollars we get per year from that. Um, the simulator itself was, the ROI was actualized, uh, after two years. So, currently, um, everything is profit.
Excellent.
Yeah. Um, and then on the following page, um, there are no changes here. On page twelve, on page thirteen, these are all, uh, existing expenses as well. We're not requesting any changes here.
Are we taking out one of the awards we applied for? I mean, we're going just a thousand dollars down in advertising? Is that an award or is that, what, what's the change for that?
I'm sorry, what, what page are you on, Trusty Ganzey?
Advertising line is six thousand last year and then five thousand this year. So, I'm just wondering if there's an award we're not applying for or something, if anything was changed.
It's on the line item, page ten.
Yeah, sorry, back to page ten, I was trying.
Hold on one second. Okay, got you. Um, that, uh, particular line item's gone down a thousand dollars because we're seeing, um, over the years, we did a lot of, um, publications and we're starting to gear away from that and focusing on, um, social media.
Okay. I, I was questioning it because I, I think I read in the description, trying to focus advertising or marketing on more than the bride.
Right.
For food and bev, this is golf.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Thank you. Um, and then... The only other on page fourteen, our bag stands for the driving range, two thousand dollars. Those, uh, bag stands and dividers are, uh, about twenty years old as well. And then that takes us to, uh, grounds maintenance and I will let, uh, Matt take it from there.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. Uh, feel free to stop me at any time with questions. The first page is personnel requests and we have none. Next page is capital outlay and we have none. The next page is professional development and we have a decrease of forty-six percent. We removed some local chap, chapter monthly meetings. The next page is professional association and we have a decrease of twelve percent. And then on the last page is line item detail. Some of the bigger increases are building maintenance material. We have to repair some pinhole leaks in our fire suppression system. And we are doing some tests and repairs to our well pump, which is over twenty years old. And then tree maintenance, we need to remove over twenty dead trees on the golf course. They are a major safety issue and they are a bit too large for us to do in-house. So, we bring in the professionals to take those down safely. And then building and grounds, we are seal coating the parking lot and repairing some cart paths on the golf course. And that's our major increases in our, in our budget. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
So, you are going to replace some of the paths in-house?
Yeah, we're going to work with Public Works and do some of the worst paths, for example, eight and number nine.
Twelve.
Twelve, fifteen tee box.
Let's drive into that pond every time I go down that one.
So, this doesn't have any funding in here for reconfiguring of the unused locker rooms in the building, if I read this correctly?
It does not.
We, we're getting prices right now. Um, we've had an architect come in and take a look at, um, a way to, how would you describe it? They make it, we have, you know, we have a brides room and putting together a groom's room for, um, an, an upcharge for our events. So, um, we've talked to an architect who's found a way to put some, um, plans together and now we're in the process of costing it. But, um, I think with what we have within the budget, we can cover that.
The cost of the work or the cost of the architectural work?
Of the work.
Oh, okay.
Is it long enough to put a bocce court in there? That would probably be better.
There you go, pickleball.
I'll have to look at that.
What are we thinking about putting?
Pickleball's too loud, we already know that.
What's that?
What are we thinking about putting in there?
They're improving it for the brides.
They are coming up with the idea. They're, the staff is coming up with the idea.
Yeah.
I asked them to look into utilizing the unused thirteen-hundred square feet roughly.
Yeah, Paul, why don't you give us some more detail?
And I'm, I'm not an expert on architecture, but what they're determining that the best way around the thing is, would be to, uh, take the bridal suite the way it is right now for the women, uh, really, uh, demolish all the shower space that's inside there that the men's and the women share. That would turn the women's, uh, bridal suite into kind of like a, uh, a two-sided thing where there'd be counter space on both sides and vanities and it would match the whole thing. Another full-length mirror in there. So, it would like double the space that really is good for maybe five, six people, but would accommodate bridal parties of ten to twelve a lot better. And at the same time, uh, in the, in the men's room, there's really nothing in there at all to kind of address them, like a cooler, a couch, a TV, something to go ahead and, uh, put bu, buckets of beer or whatever and still give us some stores, storage, but eliminating a lot of the, getting in the room by eliminating a lot of the lockers that aren't used at all. Whether we increase, you know, in, in, increase the price for, for their usage or, or come up with a bunch of incentives like, um, geez, work with different vendors to get hair done and get part of that or to go ahead and do champagne charcuterie boards and kind of just step up that whole little area. You're never going to know for sure, but you'll probably gain maybe a wedding or two that you won't get already by being big enough and they can picture themselves in there.
Sounds good.
Our lounge feel without the cigars, so the, the leather chairs, maybe a, a fine bourbon cabinet, they pay for it.
I do think there's some merit to that because if you have a place where people, grooms, groomsmen can hang out, you're more likely to be able to upsell your wedding.
Well, yeah, that's where you're going to do that. Right, right now, you have, you have lockers you don't use, three shower stalls you don't use and they hang out in there before the ceremony, but there, there's a way to make that better off to where even if you get a few hundred dollars out of it, that's a material, you're maybe getting two or three weddings out of it.
Yeah.
And, and I will attest to increasing the bride space. Lots of times, the wedding parties are, are large and you have, um, bridesmaids and flower girls in the regular restroom. And, you know, you walk in there and you're dodging, you know, a flower girl that you don't want to wrinkle. Um, so, I, I do think that, um, Paul's correct in that, um, we'll be able to accommodate some larger weddings and, and Paul can certainly speak to this, that the average size of a wedding is decreasing. So, being able to be attractive to ones that are still large, um, will certainly be, um, an inroad for us.
Okay. Uh, okay, Scott already covered a whole lot of my points already, so, uh, we can kind of, we don't have a whole lot in here, but thank you for giving me the time to go ahead and present to the FNB part of the twenty-five, twenty-six golf budget. Uh, we have no, uh, capital outlay we're looking for and no professional, uh, request to add some personnel. We have the normal, uh, professional development detail of the, uh, Bassett Food Handling and Food Service Manager certifications. Um, we do not do anything with any professional associations because we think we, 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 we do pretty well on our own. Uh, we, we stay engaged with a lot of stuff on, uh, all the wedding sites and everything and we have a good group that we can, uh, spend a lot of time with and make some good, uh, good decisions. Um, going to the restaurant line items, um, I guess based on having one less full-time employee, I think it's pretty impressive that we really, uh, have a zero percent personnel increase uh, for total personnel services for the year compared to budget. Um, we worked very hard with the group of four of us to go ahead and pull off the work of five and we, um, I'd like to tell you, it's the old guys trying to do the deals that I've been able to get out of the office and talk to people more, but it's really a full-on effort. It's pretty cool to walk in and have a couple talk, talk to your chef. You won't find that at very many places. Um, it's, it's a really well-rounded team that works day-to-day on their days off to check on dates. Uh, our goal is to get five more weddings for the year just straight up. Obviously, we're, we're well in excess of that and, uh, our real goal is to make sure every, uh, every phone call, every lead, every visit, uh, ends up in a deal of some type. So, uh, our, our, our goal of five was, was easy to beat and now we almost, we did more than double then. Um, under restaurant, um, one percent increase compared to what we have over budget. Uh, under, just giving restaurant, going over to banquet, we have no capital outlay requests for banquet. Uh, same certifications under banquet. Uh, under, uh, golf banquet, uh, line items, um, again, regular salaries, two-twenty-four compared to two-thirty-three for the year. That's going way back to what it actually cost in twenty-two, twenty-three. Uh, so, so that's quite an accomplishment, I got to believe. Uh, we've lowered, uh, lowered overtime on there and we believe we're going to run, even with more increased banquet revenue, we believe we're going to be able to cut ten thousand dollars off the estimate of this year based on the reduced, uh, reduced labor due to the casual package, which is why we got down to the one-sixty. Uh, so, even with the increase in revenue, we're proposing still to be down one percent in, uh, banquet expenses. Under the, uh, line item justifications, the only thing different on there is we did choose to eliminate Wedding Wire and we're using that money maybe for event active. Oh, and we're going to do it, use that money also for boosting of, uh, social media on Instagram, Facebook. We're going to actually get in some of the Google expenditures and everything. So, that's going to be money well spent. We will not give the examiner the five hundred dollars we have in there. And then really the little cash cow down at the midway, um, we're, it looks profit-wise, we're projecting to make about a hundred-and-thirteen thousand dollars down there this year. Uh, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to entertain them.
Well, I do have one question for you.
Let it rip.
Page thirty-four, I can't pronounce this. It's M-A-E-S.
Mastronzi.
Uh, what is it?
Mastronzi.
Mastronzi knife.
Knife sharpener.
They're a big, big knife company in Chicago.
It's got to be for nine hundred bucks.
Yeah.
The owner used to...
They, they keep our knife sharp so we don't cut our, our fingers.
He coached in the Raiders organization, he coached my son one year.
Really? Yeah.
What is it again?
Mastronzi knife.
Mastronzi.
They're known night, like worldwide, actually.
Is it actually a knife?
Knife, it's knife sharpening.
Knife sharpening, right?
Yeah, but their knives are expensive.
They, they, they do our knives, they do our slicers like twice a year, they do our can openers and...
Oh, okay, I'm with you now.
Stuff that, better than to be doing it than for us to be doing it.
I was thinking something totally different.
Oh, no.
Okay.
I have a couple of points real quick. Okay. Golf course facility, the parking lot, what is the lifespan or expectations of replacing that and when is that coming up?
That's in PW, right?
The parking lot right now is, it's in decent shape. We might do some patching, but the, the schedule for this year is to seal coat it to extend the life.
It is going to get seal coated this year. The second question, um, we took the trash enclosure and moved it. Was there a plan? Is there anything in the works for that area where we move that from for outdoor venue? Has it been discussed? I know that was one of the reasons they moved it. It kind of fell by the wayside.
One of the big things is that we still have our outdoor ceremonies. And so, those outdoor ceremonies no longer overlook the dumpster, which it not only is nice for picture-taking, but it's also nicer for, uh, uh, we don't have to time the garbage a little more closely to not interfere with that. Um, we've looked at some things to, um, to provide that as like a photo area, but we're still looking at, you know, how best to utilize that space. There are some, you know, there might be some tent options or, um, it's still something that we're working on.
Yeah, the, uh, the, the golf course is real close to the clubhouse on all sides for the most part. And, um, I think it was brought up last year, in fact, possibly using the, uh, that little putting green to the left of the midway along the railroad tracks even. Um, we've had many, many hours of discussions of what, what the best way for that to look, even a gazebo down with the pond in the back on that same area and that, the turnaround down over in there. Um, that's got, that should be the next step at some point to get a plan. People want their outdoor ceremonies and it, that's one of those unique glitchy things on a golf course that if you do right, it's going to be another one of those selling points.
And one of the problems you have with that also are people coming by constantly with their golf carts because I've seen that before where people just wanted to gather on that, on that putting green you're talking about.
Oh, yeah.
And then they walk, and carts are back and forth.
You know, then you got, you got heels, you got, you know, some courses maybe close half of a hole down or, or only use a ladies tee for a little while, like up on the top where the flagpole is and they play that, uh, sixteenth hole's a short par five or whatever it is for a half an hour in the middle of Saturday afternoon. That, that's been brought up also, but there's not an ideal situation for any of those.
I just thought maybe we could explore taking the balcony that's out there and maybe just extending it as an elevated...
We've looked, yeah, um...
And then have the underneath as storage for golf carts or other things. And then, uh, the last thing I want to point out, we're going to need a roof at some point on that building and I just want to make sure that we're aware that that's going to come up at some point.
Oh, yeah.
Had the roof looked at a couple of times.
Yeah, but, uh, we have had it looked at a couple of times. There was one, um, hole that was repaired about two years ago. Um, but to your point, the roof is, is nearing its life expectancy, so that will come up at some point.
The, the, the size of the veranda, for what it's worth, if we can only put a hundred-and-fifty people out there and people visualize that, which is really the extent of what we can do and the people are coming in with a, a count of maybe more than one-fifty, one-seventy-five, that makes them worry if, where are the other people? What are they going to be looking through the window at the event instead? So, that would pay for itself long-term probably also.
Um, just a couple of things. Um, one that, you know, Matt doesn't like to brag, but, um, the work that he's done to, um, naturalize some areas to beautify the course, but also cut down on the maintenance. The work that the irrigation system does now is, um, precise and gives us the ability to save on a lot of the water use. And so, we're, we're really seeing the benefits on the course for that. I just wanted to highlight that having that, um, system in and early was a really great testament to the coordination of the staff at the golf course and they did a great job staying on top of that project and getting that massive investment in without a lot of disruption to the players. Um, and the other thing that, um, I'm excited that we're doing this coming summer is we've included, uh, Bartlett Hills, um, in the internship program with the high school for mechanics. So... school for mechanics. So not only will we have students, um, in the clubhouse for hospitality, we'll have students down, um, with Matt and his crew, um, in the, in the grounds garage, um, working on small engine and all that good stuff. And, and really, um, part of that is from the outreach that Trey has done with the high school. And, um, Nancy Coleman, the woman who coordinates the, the internship program largely, um, across several districts, says that it's a real big need for students and to have an amount of in, internships. So I'm excited that we're able to do that.
That's really cool. Matt, I just want to know a quick question. Has the, now that it's all in, has it, um, met your expectations prior to it being installed? Is it, I know you described how you can set things and is it, is it all working the way you expected?
Yeah, it was, when we first were trying to pitch it to you guys and stuff, and you guys would ask, some people would ask me, well, what's the irrigation going to do for the golf course? And it was hard to know exactly because I never went through a brand-new irrigation system. But it's exceeded my expectations. We are able to control exactly where the water goes. We can run irrigation at nighttime on greens for 38 seconds, one minute, two minutes, and then the water shuts off right away. The playability on the golf course, I believe, is going to be outstanding going forward. Just the amount of water and where we can put it. Like, before, we never had irrigation on our green banks that just shot in the rough. So this is our first time being able to water the rough by itself around the greens. And I believe the green banks, people were saying, were just so lush this year, you could actually hit a normal chip shot and not be off hardpan and stuff. And then for the grounds department, for us specifically, when we arrive in the morning, we know that the irrigation ran last night. We don't have to spend an hour, two hours driving around. What heads are leaking? How much water did we lose from those leaking heads when they stopped running at midnight, the time we got there at 5:00 AM? And the amount of irrigation repairs that we don't have to do now, we had pinhole leaks all over the golf course. We probably had 25, 30 pinhole leaks that were popping up. So we're not fixing irrigation now. We're able to spend time on rebuilding the bunkers. We would like to, in the future, start leveling tee boxes, continue with tree work, and so we're just able to do a lot more around the golf course that isn't just repairing irrigation breaks.
One thing, to piggyback what Matt said, if you look at our reviews over the course of the last couple decades, you'll see the word value continue to pop up. We're starting to get away from that, and we're embarking on premier. And that's what we, we're going to, we're going to gear towards the next few years with your support of the irrigation system and the hard work that Matt's done with the playing surface.
Yeah, that, that allows that $65, $70 a round.
I want to piggyback off of what you just said, Scott, and take a page out of the police department's book and, and Public Works and the fire department. We've got the big anniversary next year. Uh, should we start setting some money aside for that? Uh, have a day, like a open house where you get the, the golf carts out, the kids can come, come see what the golf carts look like, have all the tractors out all buffed up and cleaned up, uh, have Tiger Woods come from Florida Five. I, I mean, I'm joking, but have a celebrity draw, whoever it is. But if we start budgeting for that, it's not going to look like we're just doing our, what is it, 100th, 175th anniversary, whatever it is.
As part of our institute day, we discussed that at great length of the golf course, and the 100th year anniversary is something that we're really going to lean into and we see as a, a really a good marketing opportunity. So we're starting to lay the groundwork toward the end of this year as well as next year to launch that.
So if it's an open house, they can see the, the kitchen capabilities, they can see the, the, the groom's smoking room and the bride's, you know, bouquet room and all that stuff. So I mean, let's keep, let's keep talking about it.
Yeah. That's what's our budget. Ray Dany is our celebrity golfer that'll show up. That's what our budget will allow.
Well, it doesn't have to be Ray, it doesn't have to be Tiger, but you get somebody, you're going to get some people to show up.
And, um, just lastly, I want to point out to, uh, page 39, which is the combined golf department. Um, you guys wanted to see all the numbers on one page for all the divisions, and, um, we made that happen.
I like it.
Thank you.
And, the, real quick, the lease for the, uh, golf carts, is that a zero maintenance lease, or do we still have to maintain them?
Yeah, we, we would maintain them still.
So they just give them to you, and you have to still do all the maintenance on them, oil changes, everything?
Yes.
Is there an option to have a zero maintenance lease for them?
Our research, we haven't, we have not seen, no.
Just asking.
That's what the interns are for from the high school.
My girls know how to change the oil.
Who's that on? Who had that committee?
They don't do it, but they know how to do it.
Um, if there's no other comments, are you guys finished? Good job?
Yep, I think so.
Thank you, Chairman Dany. If that'll entertain a motion.
What was it? It was Laporte, but I'll take it. Motion to adjourn.
Finance, yeah. If there's no further questions, we'll continue, uh, continue with the budget at our next, uh, meeting.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman Laporte. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
By Trusty Dany, second by Trusty Ganzey. Would the court please call the roll?
Trusty Dany?
Yes.
Ganzey?
Yes.
Wunstein?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Laporte?
Yes.
Zawanski?
Yes.